Moments, I'd like to give you a few words of what's going to go on today. We are going to be dealing with several items this morning with respect to some bonds that we are contemplating. We are going to accept input from the stakeholders. We will accept comment cards. We are going to break at 12 noon today for lunch. We are going to then reconvene at 1 o'clock. And we have a session set for 2 o'clock, but certainly if the morning session continues, we will continue on until we finish with the matters from the morning. So with that being said, welcome to the Board of County Commissioners meeting. It's March 29, 2022. May I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Bernard?
Here.
Commissioner Kerner?
Here.
Commissioner Moreno?
Here.
Commissioner McKinley?
Here.
Commissioner Sacks?
Here.
Mayor Weinroth?
Here.
Vice Mayor Weiss?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner McKinley, would you please do the honors of the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance? Everybody, please stand.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate this opportunity to do the opening prayer this morning for our meeting. I'd like to take this opportunity to ask everybody in the room for a moment of silence in respect to Tiana Johnson and her family, and Shan Wazir and his family. They are two of the four student Palm Beach County public school students who were killed in a horrific car accident last week while standing at their bus stop. We offer our prayers and our sympathies to their family, their friends, and their school community. And I just ask that we have a moment of silence for them and the two students who are also recovering at this time. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. Okay. County Administrator, we have any additions, deletions, or substitutions?
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the board. No, we do not for today.
Thank you very much. I'm looking for a motion to adopt. I have a motion by the Vice Mayor, second by the Commissioner Kerner. All in favor, all opposed? We have adopted our agenda. All right, it's time for the main event. Dorrit?
Good morning, Mayor. Thank you very much, and good morning to the members of the board and our Administrator Baker. So this morning, you know, as mentioned, we'll be having a workshop on bonds, housing and environmental water bond. And just to outline the series of presentations, there are several presentations. So the first one will be the general obligation bond and also revenue bond by our OFMB staff. Environmental Water Bonds, that would be by Deb Drum, the Director of ERM, as well as the Sustainable Palm Beach County. We'll hear comments from that group as well. We'll then move into the Palm Beach County Housing Plan, and that's two presentations. Housing Leadership Council will make a presentation on the housing plan that has been developed for Palm Beach County, followed by brief presentation from the Department of Housing and Economic Development. And then we will complete our presentations with a workforce housing program policy considerations. So we have many staff members here at the table. I call them the dynamic team. And so I am Dorrit Miller, Assistant County Administrator, and we'll start from my left.
Okay, I'm going to interrupt you just for a second, Sheri, and I see the water is being distributed, so we're anticipating a little while here. Vice Mayor, I'm going to defer to you to introduce our special guests.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the, this opportunity. This morning, we have some students from middle school, the conservatory middle school in the northern part of the county, and they, a few months ago, had heard about some of the issues going on as it relates to housing and the shortage of housing and workforce, affordable housing in our community, and had a project that they worked on to learn about and come up with some ideas on how you might be able to solve that issue in our county. So they're here this morning. There's four students that have joined us, and they're going to give us a bit of a presentation on the work that they did, what they learned, and I think, from what I've seen of their efforts, I think we have some things to learn from them. So I would appreciate if we can, Penny, if you want to bring the students up to the podium, and we can have them introduce themselves and talk to us about their plan for affordable housing in Palm Beach County.
My name is Penny. I'm just a parent. I'm here with Ms. Stubbs, and we are introducing you to the students of the Conservatory School of North Palm Beach. And today, we're just going to review a project that the students did in the fall. It relates to what you're discussing today with workforce housing, affordable housing, and homelessness in our county. And I appreciate your time today, and the students will give you a little bit of brief overview of what they learned and why it's impactful.
Thank you very much. Would you introduce yourself, and we're ready to hear you?
Hello, I'm Carson Stubbs. I'm in 7th grade at the Conservatory School. We did a project trying to find solutions to affordable housing and homelessness. One of the things I found out was even $15 per hour is not enough to actually rent an apartment at the Conservatory School, not the Conservatory School, in North Palm Beach. You can, if you do $15 per hour, deduct the tax, which is 78%, and that'll come out to around $11.50. If we do that times 40 hours a week, that'll give us roughly $4,560. If we do that times four weeks, we'll get $1,824, which the average rent in Palm Beach is $2,000. So that means we will be about $180 short, and that's before you even consider food, insurance, toothpaste, closing, and other necessities.
Hi, my name is Olivia, and my PBL class studied poverty, homelessness, and global goals and how to solve these problems. Our PBL class created PSAs and projects designing tiny homes, a community of tiny homes.
Hi, I'm Michael Gaffney, and currently, and Palm Beach County doesn't allow tiny homes. Our zoning laws require a house to be 401 square feet or more to be considered as a house. What's important to think about is how to find affordable, smaller homes in our community for our homeless, low-income families, and even our service workers, like veterans, restaurant workers, gas station workers, sprinkler technicians, librarians, teachers, janitors, also our firemen and police officers.
Hi, I'm JJ. I also go to the Conservatory School. We were asked two essential questions. What causes homelessness, and what can, what can we as student engineers do to eliminate it? We created PSAs, use current building codes, building guidelines, and scale an area to design a community to help. We researched root causes of statistics, poverty line, access to resources, national and local organizations, and programs that can help. Thank you for your time today to review our project and to hear us today. We leave you with just one question. Could tiny homes be the answer to our community's growing housing crisis? Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do appreciate your remarks, and the reason we're here today is because we want to make sure that there is housing for you when you are ready to buy your own home or rent your own apartment. Thank you so much.
I'm just, I'm leaving a copy of part of the project that the students did. It's available online, I believe the link went to each of you from a Google Drive, and please take a chance to look over the PSAs and the different work that the students did, but I'm leaving you with a hard copy as well as some statistics that the students based their research on.
Thank you. Commissioner McKinley?
Yes, thank you. First, to, you're never just a parent, you're leading the charge here. Before the students walk out, I just, I want to say thank you for being here this morning, and to let you know that I am a big fan of tiny homes and have been pushing that concept since my time here on the commission. Our county administrator has coined the phrase cottage homes instead of using the words tiny homes, and we have made some changes to our code, and we have a lot more to do. But so long as I'm on this commission for the next eight months, I'll continue to push those changes, because I do think that those micro units and those tiny homes are a huge part of the solution. So thanks for being here, and I'm glad we're on the same page.
Thank you.
And a big thank you to Vice Mayor Weiss, and thank you Commissioner McKinley, Mayor and Commissioners, all here. We appreciate you taking the time today to join all of our fight and for giving the kids a voice. Thank you.
Administrator Baker?
I'd also like to thank you very much. When we're ready to cut the ribbon on our cottages, which is tiny homes, but we call them cottages in Palm Beach County, I'd like to invite you and the students to the ribbon cutting. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, terrific. Well, that's a tough act to follow, Sheri, so here you go.
Let's see, how can I make myself disappear?
So we just continue with the introductions.
Sheri Brown, Director of OFMB.
Mark Braun, Palm Beach County Debt Manager, working in the Office of Financial Management and Budget.
Jonathan Brown, Department Director, Housing and Economic Development.
Pat Rutter, Assistant County Administrator.
Deborah Drum, Director, Environmental Resources Management.
And now to Sheri Brown for bonds.
All right, let's see if I can kick it off with what a GO bond is. So our general obligation bonds are backed by the credit and taxing power of Palm Beach County. They would be a countywide bond. The debt service is funded by a separate millage rate, and it does not impact the county's 10 mills for our operating millage rate. If, once a referendum is approved by the voters, staff would then bring back a bond resolution to the board. We would work with our financial advisors, our underwriter, Bond Council, to issue the bonds. The bond proceeds will be allocated to projects approved by the BCC. During the budget preparation for FY 2024, we would include the millage rate to fund the debt service. In trim notices, tax bills will include this new debt service on those bills. I'll just throw in, it's not up on the slide, but the, there's another type of bonds we've discussed in the past, and that's our revenue bonds, our non-ad valorem bonds. Those would be funded within our general fund. The revenue pledge to those are our non-ad valorem, because it cannot be ad valorem. So it's for our unincorporated revenues, like our public service tax dollars, our franchise fees, our state shared revenues would be the pledge to those debt services. The revenue bonds do not require a vote from the public, so it would be just something that the BCC would approve to move forward. But the debt service now competes against anything else we would want to add into our general fund each year. So general obligation bonds aren't completely new to Palm Beach County. Here's just a few that we've issued since 1991. There was a referendum in 1991 that approved $100 million for environmentally sensitive lands. We issued 50 million in '91, and a second 50 million in '94. In 1999, the voters approved a $25 million Parks Bond, and they also approved $150 million for the ag reserve land purchases. And those ag bonds were issued in two issues. We did 75 million in 1999, and the second 75 million in 2001. All of these bonds have matured, and we no longer have on our books. So what we currently have outstanding for the countywide bonds, we have two bonds outstanding. We have a Parks and Culture Bonds that were issued in 2003 and 2005. The referendum approved $50 million, and we issued 25 million on those two different years. The voters also approved in 2006 a waterfront access bond for $50 million. Both of those bonds are maturing in 2025 and 2026. And then we also have two library bonds. However, the library bonds are not countywide, it's for the unincorporated area and those cities that participate in the library district, and those also mature in 2023 and 2025. So a little bit about assuming we do a referendum in 2022, for every $100 million approved by the voters, we would issue these bonds as either taxable or tax exempt with a 20-year maturity. And once we have a full project list, we would decide whether it should be taxable or tax exempt. The earliest we could issue a bond would be in April 2023, because we need the debt service to occur in fiscal year 2024, which would be the first chance we could add a millage rate to the budget. They can be in multiple issues and smaller amounts, so we don't have to issue 100 million all at one time. The annual debt service, depending on its tax exempt or taxable, is about $6.6 to $6.8 million. Our current taxable property values for debt service is $222.3 billion. So an estimated millage rate based on a $6.8 million debt service would be about .0280. For every $100,000 of taxable property, a taxpayer would pay $2.80 annually. When we prepared our current budget, the median assessed value for homesteaded properties was 295,000, less a 50,000 homestead exemption, is a $245,000 taxable value, which would equate to about $6.89 annually. I'm going to assume that might go up a little bit in this next year, but we'll see that when we do our 2023 budget. And then again, just looking at something like $100,000 taxable value, 10 times that is a million-dollar property, and they would pay $28 annually. So the next three slides are a little detailed, and I did, assuming we issued $100 million bond, just to kind of give you a flavor of what the millage rate would look like over the next five years. The next two slides assumes a $200 million bond and a $300 million bond. So the first thing at the top line, we take our current countywide property values of $222.3 billion. I'm assuming a 5% increase in 2023, and then a 4% increase in the remaining out years. So our current bonds, the Parks and the Waterfront Access, the current millage rate is .0334, which equates to about $3.34 a year for that $100,000 of value. Assuming a 5% increase with kind of level debt for those bonds, we'd see a slight drop to .0306 in 2023. And 2024 would be the first year we would see a millage rate for $100 million GO bond. So, and also in 2024, our Parks Bond, since it was over two issues, one of those issues will mature in 2023, and then in 2024, you'll see a drop of about $3.7 million of debt service to about 1.9. So our existing GO bonds equate to about .0220 in 2024. With the addition of a new $100 million, we could be looking at a .05 millage rate. And then it just carries it out throughout the remaining three years. In 2025, 2026, you see the Parks Bond is now matured and no longer has a debt service. And then in 2027, our Waterfront Access Bond has matured, no more debt service there. So we would just have the $1,100 million at .0249, and that's $2.49 for each $100,000 of taxable value. So assuming a $200 million bond, it's the same basic assumptions through this. I did assume that if we issued the first $100 million in 2024, we would be looking at that same .05 millage rate. And then assuming, you know, we know that our Parks Bond will be paid off and our Waterfront Access Bonds paid off by 2026. If we issued a second $100 million in 2027, we would be looking at a millage rate about .0498, which would be close to the same in 2024, which equates to $4.98 annually for each $100,000, or our $245,000 value would be $12.25. Lastly, assuming we wanted to issue $300 million worth of bonds, same assumptions with the first $100 million being issued in 2024. In this example, I went ahead and said a second $100 million in 2026, and then the third in 2027, just to try to get it all into a five-year program. But of course, we would have the option to go out past five years if that's what we wanted to do. So by 2027, our debt service would be $20.4 million or .07 mills. That'd be $7.47 for each $100,000 value, or $18 for the $245,000 home. But it's just an option of what it could possibly look like to do a $300 million bond. If we want to move forward with a GO bond, it could go on our primary election in August 23rd. We would have to have our ballot language and resolutions to the SOE by May 20th. If it was at the general election in November, those deadlines would be August 5th.
Thank you, Sheri. Just want to reiterate, if, and for everybody here, we're not going to vote on this today. This is just a workshop. We will develop a consensus. If there's a consensus to move forward on either or both of the bonds, then staff will come back with a ordinance that this body will then again have a discussion on. So this is just a matter of trying to develop a consensus up here, and we certainly are going to be listening to the comments that are made by the residents. Sheri, just to reiterate, if we approve this eventually, and if the voters approve this in November, that doesn't mean that then whatever has been approved is automatically going to hit their tax bills in the following year.
Correct, yeah. So the very earliest would be 2023, and I would recommend, whatever dollar amount, we only issue enough bonds for what projects we feel like we have ready to go at that time. There's no deadline as to how long we have to issue these, so we can take it out past the five years. I just used it just to get it on one slide.
Thank you. Now, you did allude to the fact there's two types of bonds. There's a GO and there's a revenue. Can you talk about the difference in the way that that money is applied? Is there a difference in the way, because we have incorporated areas and unincorporated areas? How, is there a difference between the GO money and the revenue bonds as far as how that can be applied?
Correct. The GO bond is a countywide millage rate, so everybody in Palm Beach County would pay it. If it's a revenue bond in the general fund, it's really the unincorporated revenues, something like our public service tax dollars, our franchise fees. Those are the pledges that we would see against a revenue bond.
Very good. Okay. I'm going to pause this discussion. Commissioner Bernard, you're usually there to help me out on this, and you weren't today, but I'm going to go back to the regular agenda and ask for a motion to receive and file. I have a motion by Commissioner Kerner, I have a Vice Mayor has seconded it, we have a motion to receive and file the warrant list, and I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the minutes for November 23rd, January 4th, and February 1st. I have a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Kerner, all in favor, all opposed. I see that as approved 7 to 0. There's also a motion to approve contracts, regular and claim settlements. I have a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Kerner, all in favor, all opposed. It's approved 7-0. And staff recommends a motion to receive and file change orders and work task orders. I have a motion by the Vice Mayor, I have a second by the Commissioner Kerner, all in favor, all opposed. That is approved 7-0. Our clerk will be very happy that we've taken care of that little piece of business. We'll move on now to the presentation. Ms. Miller? Oh, I see, Commissioner Bernard, your light's on.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Sheri, can you kind of like, since with the housing plan, there's a discussion regarding $100 million for using a revenue bond, did you do like a presentation or a slide regarding the revenue, doing the revenue bond?
We did not. Staff would recommend a GO bond on that regards, but the debt service would be similar to a GO bond, it would just have a different pledge, and then those revenues would have to come out of our general fund.
But wouldn't it be prudent for staff to prepare a, an analysis of the, of the revenue bond, so in that way, we can make a decision, instead of staff deciding to not present it to us?
The Administrator would like to comment.
Commissioners, the board gave us clear direction to come back regarding a GO bond. They did not tell us to bring back any revenue bond. So we followed direction, and we brought back the GO bond. We can definitely talk to the revenue bond, actually have staff, again, it's all of our general fund revenues less ad valorem dollars. And so those would be our communication tax dollars, and if you're looking for specific dollar amounts, we can definitely get that and bring it back up later. But this board directed us to bring back GO bonds, yes.
Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
I disagree. This board did not give staff the direction of only discussing the GO bond. I think that we asked you to take a look at both the revenue bond and the GO bond. And so to give us a presentation on just a GO bond and not give us a full picture of the revenue bond, then, you know, we're not getting a full picture of which way should we go. This is more of your direction in terms of how you want us to proceed, but you have the housing plan, it calls for both a revenue bond and a GO bond, and you have, you have to tell us exactly how would it impact both.
We're able to provide that information to you, but it was based on the direction that you gave us and we went off on, Commissioner. It was our understanding, and I thought it was very clear, that the direction was for a GO bond to move forward. And so that's what we brought. I do know that we've got at least one slide at the end of the questions, just to talk about if the board wanted to, a revenue bond, but the direction from this board was for a GO bond.
Commissioner McKinley?
Yes, thank you. I'm actually going to agree with Commissioner Bernard on this one. I think the option was to bring back a conversation on bonds. We are, you know, we are looking at the, I'm looking at the dates here for submittal to the Supervisor of Elections if we want to move forward on any of these in a primary election, and it's Friday, May 20th. We're running out of time if that was the direction that we wanted to move in. We are coming back this afternoon at 2 o'clock for the second half of the workshop, and I would like some sort of brief pros and cons versus on both types of bonds, because we need to give you staff direction. And if we're going to put this on with the language, we need to have the plan that goes along with that language by the next, this month. That ordinance has to come back for community conversation and a first reading and a second reading before we put that language on the ballot. So I, for one, want to know what the benefits are to doing a general obligation bond versus the benefits of doing a revenue bond, and I'd also like to know the dollar amounts that we're possibly talking about. I know you've done that for the general obligation bond, but for the revenue bond, what is the dollar amount that we would be looking at? Where can those funds be spent? And are the, the expenditures more restricted with one type of bond versus another type of bond? I'd like those questions answered by the end of the day.
Administrator, is there a, can we have that information by 2 o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Miller?
Okay, so we will now move to the environmental water bond, starting with Sustainable Palm Beach County, Robert Robbins and Corin Marcus.
Good morning, and thank you, Mayor, BCC, and Administrator Baker, for allowing Sustainable Palm Beach County to brief you this morning on the water bond. My name is Robert Robbins, and I am on the Board of Sustainable Palm Beach County. Immediately before that, I was the Director of your Department of Environmental Resources Management, working for Ms. Baker, the best job anyone could have. That gave me a little bit of experience with bonds, and as Sheri said, the Environmental Resources Management in Palm Beach County in 1991 had an environmentally sensitive lands $100 million bond. That bond was actually overmatched by your staff. In other words, it, $100 million was turned In other words, it, $100 million was turned into $200 million by your staff. And that bond was so successfully implemented and so popular with the constituents, in March of 1999, the county did $150 million bond, of which $50 million went again towards environmentally sensitive lands and $100 million towards the ag reserve. Now, since that time, as Sheri described, there have been other referenda. Some of the referenda for property tax, some of them for sales tax, some the voters liked, some the voters didn't like, but they got to choose. This bond isn't the same as the environmentally sensitive lands bonds. This is a water bond. And just in summary, this is a bond about storing and providing for clean water for Palm Beach County's future. It's about increasing the storage for clean, fresh water. And storing clean, fresh water and the slow release of that clean, fresh water provides for the estuaries. The estuaries are right now are in trouble, Locksatcha River, Lake Worth Lagoon, the entire intercoastal waterway. That clean, fresh water can also reduce the opportunities or the chances of us seeing the same blue-green algae that we've seen in years past. Also, storing clean, fresh water has the opportunity for that fresh water to percolate down through the ground and provide for drinking water for a growing county. Also, storage of fresh water provides some resiliency toward the county, and I'll deviate from the script here for a little bit and say, during my time working for the county, we had a little tropical storm sitting over the county for a couple of days, dumped a lot of rain. There was a neighborhood that was very close to having flooding going into people's housing. Bob Weissman called me and said, there's a natural area nearby. Can we pump this water into that natural area? Well, the answer when Bob Weissman calls is yes. And then you figure out how you're going to do it. And we managed to get a natural area that normally stores about two feet of water to store six feet of water for a number of weeks. So the answer when you get a lot of rain isn't drainage. There is no drainage available. It's storage, storage of more fresh water. And obviously, when you have drought, the answer is be prepared with storage of fresh water. And so to make our county more resilient, the more fresh water we have stored, the county becomes more resilient in the face of extreme weather events. And of course, this provides just greater resilience for the county, helps not just each, it does help each individual within the county, helps also the county's economy. So everyone can see that county's tourism is dependent on clean, fresh water. The growth of the county is dependent on a source of clean, fresh water. And if you think even a little bit deeper, the resilience going forward of the county is dependent on greater storage of fresh water. Appreciate your time this morning. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Marcus, you are recognized.
Good morning, and thank you.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Sacks would like to ask a question.
Thank you, Mayor. And I wonder if we could ask questions as folks come up?
Absolutely, Commissioner. You are within your rights.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much, sir, for your analysis. When you talked about the rain event that happened a couple of years ago, was that the rain event that occurred over Kings Point in Delray Beach where three people lost their lives because of the flooding?
No, ma'am, it was not. This actually was a rain event that was centered over the acreage.
Was, do you have any information as to that event that occurred? And I think it had to be probably five years ago where three people perished because of the flooding in the Kings Point area of our county?
No, I, I do not, I'm afraid. I can probably get you some information on that, but off the top of my head, I do not.
Well, I have the information. The reason I'm asking you is this. That was a terrible event that occurred whereby the way that Kings Point is built, there was a lot of flooding into the, into the apartments, into the dwellings, from, right from the, right from this rain event. And people died in their homes because of the flooding. Now, my question is, if we vote for this, for this issue, for this bond, will that, what, if anything, will that do to those areas of the county? And I'm sure Kings Point is not the only one that was built so many years ago that it doesn't, it doesn't provide for good water flow from intense rain events?
I don't know the situation specifically. If Kings Point is designed with a, you know, a poor system, it may not, it may not help it. But if we can provide storage upstream of Kings Point, then there could be benefit to Kings Point. And I don't know the location of Kings Point specifically, but if this bond can provide storage of water before it reaches Kings Point downstream, then there would be a significant benefit.
So this, if I may, Mr. Mayor, so this bond money would not just, and I see we have all these proposed projects. Would we, as county commissioners, be able to add projects to these proposed projects so that areas in our districts that have suffered and people have been injured and died from these, these climatic changes? Would we be able to add to these proposed projects?
I think that's a question more for your staff, but I believe we have to have the projects known before we go to the voters. The list of projects is longer than the dollars. That's true for most bonds. But I believe that's a question for your staff.
May I redirect this?
Yes, certainly.
Have administrator?
We want to put this to our council?
No, okay, I think I could, I think it's right here to my left, possibly. Would we be, my, listen, this is the issue. I see wonderful parks. One of them is in my district. I want to be able to develop our parks that are useful for water storage and water purification, but my main issue is, is to save lives. And we have some housing projects in our county that are, were built so many years ago that they, one is Kings Point, where the golf course is higher than the houses, the housing units, you see? So when it rains, where does it go? It flows right into the housing units. Built many years ago, not with the idea that we would have these climatic changes. Madam Administrator, do we, can we propose, we as county commissioner, we propose to the staff, other proposed projects other than those that are listed in, in our, our policy statement here?
Overall, you can direct us, whichever projects this board directs to us. But I'm going to look at my current ERM director and let her respond to that as well.
Hi, good morning, Deb Drum, ERM Director. The issues that you've highlighted, I think it would be beneficial for me to get through the presentation and to get to that part of the presentation where we look at projects. But absolutely, we're not saying that this is the whole list of projects. I think what you've highlighted is that we have water issues in our county that are important to look at with regard to both flooding and water quality. And storage of water is a great solution for all of those issues. And the more populated areas of the county that were, as you've noted, developed prior to some of the standards that we would develop around now with regard to water, it's very important that we go through those areas and look at retrofits. And it's why we are embarking very actively on a resilience assessment for our county right now to identify those areas that are flood prone, that we need to work with both the state and federal governments to find solutions for those kind of areas so that never happens again. So you've highlighted that water is a regional issue for all of us, whether or not you have natural areas within your community or not. I think Mr. Robbins highlighted a great solution for a flooding issue in the northern part of the county where we have those opportunities, but there are issues that transcend the entire community, north to south, east to west.
And that's very understandable, that water is not a provincial issue. Water comes and affects all of us. So I just want to be sure that we include those areas in our, in our county that are, where people live, and maybe prioritize those over, and I know Green Kay, I love it, it's in my district, it's good for water purification. But I want to include in a holistic approach, the areas of the county that right now were built maybe before we had these standards, Debbs, and I appreciate that. But I do want to make a point that we need to prioritize those areas that affect, most directly affect the, the lives and property of the people who live in the county. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Mayor, we are, we are working on storm assessments. We're looking at those particular type issues. That's separate and apart from the direction the board gave us to bring back the bond list that we started working on in 20, in 19 and 2020. So there's additional funding that may be coming down the pipe for infrastructure purposes. We're looking at that. We're, we've got a grant from the state on assessments, and we'll be looking at our unincorporated areas as well. And Dave Ricks with the engineering department is looking at the stormwater system. So we, that is top of mind as far as being able to drain our county properly and store it in appropriate places. It was not a part of this particular list that we worked on. But again, this board can redirect projects the way that you want regarding the bond.
Just for clarification, Madam Administrator, are you saying that at this point in time, the contemplation is that stormwater and sewage would not be the projects that would be included in the list of projects that will be included by these funds?
I, what we have, and I, I think it might be helpful if we can go through this presentation because it will answer some of your questions. We had a long list when we started with this particular, down this road for an environmental bond, water bond. We had that list. So what we want to be able to show you is that for dollars that we received from the state and other ARPA funding that this board approved, we've moved some of those projects off of the list and the remaining projects that we will walk you through. And then this board can then direct us however you want us to move forward with projects.
Thank you.
So if we could get through the presentation, I think it'll be helpful.
Appreciate it. And I, we lost our speaker.
Commissioner Marcus is next, I believe.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to ask one question of, we, we know that the state budget, which has not been signed yet, has significant money for water projects. ARPA gave us significant money. The bipartisan infrastructure bill is potentially going to give us significant money. How does that money play into this discussion? Should we even be having this discussion today, given that flow of money that's going to be coming to us in the next couple of years from the feds and from the state?
Absolutely. Because that money is going to, most likely, need to be matched. And that's why those first two grants that ERM got were so successful. And the restoration and the projects that followed were so successful because ERM had money to be able to chase down those other grant dollars. And then, you know, obviously, those grant dollars were brought into and spent in Palm Beach County. And lately, even at the state level, there's been a lot more focus, say, on septic-to-sewer conversions. But you have to have the money locally to chase down those grant dollars with the state or with the feds.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Marcus, you've been very patient. It's your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all for allowing Sustainable to be a part of this discussion. We've been doing it for a couple of years and, you know, we're very excited to get to this part. Thank you, Commissioner Kerner, for bringing this forward. There are several board members here from Sustainable, Lisa Interlandi-Chiplock, Chris Callaway, because I can't pronounce her last name, Bob Gebbia, and Tony Bennett, I think, is still here. Did I miss anybody? We're, we're here to work and hopefully answer some questions. To your point, Commissioner Sacks, this is really, anytime we can get water to not go into the lagoon or to clean up the discharge, if this is a project that fits into the, to the framework of it, I think certainly it's, it's accessible. We tried to do the broader issues in terms of septic-to-sewer. We're trying to get the discharges into the lagoon to be clean. And if you have septic tanks all along the coast, which we do all up and down the county, if you can convert that, then it certainly goes a long way to cleaning up the lagoon. Same with the stormwater discharges. Storage, storage, storage. I think you see in there some locations that you could put some storage. I call it replumbing the system. And so certainly, Kings Point, if it has that issue, certainly could be, I think, part of the discussion. Your staff certainly will review that. So I, I just want to say again, thank you. Again, we've been working on this for over two years. We continue to grow as a county. We're a very big county from east coast to the Glades area. There are projects proposed in this bond issue that will help the Glades because they also have significant water quality issues, as, as we all know. So we, we really think it's important to move forward. I think a GO bond on this issue is best. The public, as you heard from Rob, has always supported. If you educate them and tell them the importance of it, they have supported because they, they value the environment. I mean, as we see with all the environmentally sensitive lands that we acquired with the matches, it really changes the quality of life in Palm Beach County. So I think this bond goes a long way to doing that. On the, on the Lake Worth Lagoon, we read all the time, we lost 1,000 manatees last year. We can't fix feeding the manatees until we clean up the water. The seagrass is not going to live. It just isn't. And you hear that over and over from all the experts. Same with the coral. Commissioner Weiss and I toured a place called the Reef Institute, and one of the things, they're growing coral right there in West Palm Beach, and, but they can't put it back unless the water is clean to accept it. So it really is important in terms of that kind of environment. This is a fiscal issue because if we ever get into the red tide like they did up in the northern counties, the recovery from that, for our marinas, for our fishing, for all of that, will be, will be impacted. So we encourage you to let the voters have at it. Sustainable stands ready to go out and educate, whether it's August or November. We are prepared to do that. We've been ready for a while, and it's all documented. So thank you for letting us be a part of this, and we stand ready to help however we can. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're sufficiently warmed up on water and environment bond, so I'm going to get right into it. Just to bring you up to speed on some of the background and past actions that this board has taken, because we do have two new board members since that discussion occurred between November of 2019 and March of 2020. Mr. Robbins did refer to the 1991 and the 1999 bond. I think he did a very good job at summing up, but I did want to provide just a little bit of background. $100 million for environmentally sensitive lands in 1991. That was environmentally sensitive lands only for that bond. In 1999, that $150 million bond was $50 million for additional for environmentally sensitive lands and $100 million for the ag reserve. With that, with those dollars, I think it deserves to be emphasized that we did match those dollars at least 50% with a bunch of other different government conservation agencies. And we did acquire 24 of the 37 natural areas that we manage here in Palm Beach County were acquired and partnered whole by those previous bond funds. And as I said, it was extensively leveraged. In November of 2019, the board directed staff to provide a briefing on a general obligation bond referendum for environmental and water projects. We got to work immediately, and in January of 2020, we did have some input from stakeholders, and we presented some proposed projects, as well as an overview of the bonds, the financial summary that Sheri provided, similar to what we did today, but we were at that time, we were just focused on environmental and water. And we also talked about the key dates and the draft language for the ballot referendum. We did work with bond counsel in establishing those, and the board directed us to prepare considerations for both August and November. Moving forward to February, we provided those dates, and the county directed staff for the November 2020 ballot referendum and to incorporate approaches to ensure economically disadvantaged communities were equitably included. County staff did some public outreach between January and March of 2020. I'll provide a list of who we presented to. And in March of 2020, we were directed to cease due to COVID and general uncertainty. Some of those past public education and outreach in January, January through March, we met with a variety of environmental groups that you see listed there. The Water Resources Task Force advises this board, the Economic Council, the Chamber of Commerce of the Palm Beaches Business Forum, the Palm Beach League of Cities, specific to the environmental committee, as well as the general Membership and Board of Directors, as well as the Central Palm Beach County Chamber of Commerce, and the Tourism Development Council. We were right in the middle of that when COVID hit, and the Board of County Commissioners had provided us additional lists from each of your offices of additional folks that you wanted us to meet with. The, we had not heard from all commissioners in March of 2020, but in the process, we had gotten about 40 or 50 additional community groups or organizations that you all had wanted us to meet with. Those meetings did not occur. This was where we left the ballot referendum language as of March of 2020. As you know, there's a 75-word limit. This board did revise that ballot language a few times, but this is where we landed in March of 2020. To answer one of this, during our briefings, this was never voted on or officially accepted by the board, but this is where we left the ballot language. To enhance the environment by improving water resources and water quality, through acquiring and restoring lands, constructing infrastructure to clean water and wastewater, expanding water storage and treatment facilities, and increasing public access to waterways, shall the county look at this $150 million bond. So, that is where, just wanted to bring you all up to speed of where we left it. All right, we're going to get into the list of projects as we left the list in March of 2020. To answer Commissioner Sacks more directly, there is a lot of play in this list. This list was developed a couple of years ago. The world has changed. We have different approaches to resiliency issues. We have different considerations to make, but this is where we left off. As I go through this list of projects, you'll note that the project titles are in, they're either green, or they're red, or they're orange. If they're green, that means that that is in full control of the county to be able to implement and complete that project. If it is in red, we are mostly at the mercy of others, getting agreements in place, getting permissions to do work on land. It's out of our control to a great extent. And if it's in orange, it means that we have a part to play in collaborating. That's mostly with things like willing sellers for acquisition of lands, or working with municipalities on septic-to-sewer and on, on stormwater projects. So, the other thing that we added is the column to the right on this list is that the BCC approved that initial list of ARPA dollars that ultimately were part of a revenue replacement action. So, I wanted you to see for each project whether or not you have also considered it for an ARPA project, so you can see if the, if ARPA comes into play on this. So, for Lake Okeechobee restoration, fully in our control, we had no ARPA dollars to that, and that was a consideration for $2 million for the bond. Locksahatchee Slough Flowway and hot connection and hydrologic integration, that was largely in the, were largely at the mercy of Palm Beach Gardens and the Water Management District for that. No ARPA funds, 11 million for the bond. And the Mecca restoration, again, that we're fully dependent upon the Water Management District's ability to let us move ahead with that project. We had 15 million in the bond. We have $8 million in ARPA to really begin to look at planning. But I do want to provide this as an example of how much costs have changed. When we originally did the bond list, we did our best estimates on what we thought it would take to restore an area. We used Mecca as an example. We dug deeper. After March of 2020, we dug deeper into the analysis of what it would really take to fully look at Mecca. We went out on the site. We saw the amount of concrete and the amount of structure and the amount of infrastructure that was actually on that site, which we were not previously aware of. Mecca could be, to complete that project, estimate, again, until we have engineers' estimates, we don't know. It could be a 40 or 50 million dollar project. Just to give you some context on what it would take to do that project, we originally estimated 15. It's significantly more than that. We know that now. And so, I do think that to move ahead, we are going to need to reset and refresh this list.
Commissioner Sacks, do you want to make your point now?
Yes, if I may. Deb, you are so great, and you know all these things, but this is an, this is an important question. When you have the potential partners, for example, the very first one, we're discussing Lake Okeechobee Restoration, potential partners, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Now, county taxpayers are going to give money on this bond, and we're going to, and we're going to do it for sustainability of our county. How much is going to be funded by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, South Florida Water Management District, Lake Worth? We have these partners also with the state. How much are they going to contribute to what we want to do as a county for sustainability? And can that be shown either now or later in your presentation, or pretty soon?
So, typically, we get at least 50/50 cost share matches. And in my particular department, we've shown that we can get greater than that. So, it is very difficult for any of these agencies to fully agree to a 50/50 cost share unless you have the money in hand, unless you can demonstrate that you can do the cost share. In this particular project, we actually have a very good relationship through some of the core specific funding programs for this type of project. We're very confident in this particular project and, because again, we have full, really, control over whether we move ahead with it or not. So, we do feel optimistic in this particular one, but that's not the case with all of the projects. It's very tough for agencies like the Water Management District to commit to saying, "We're going to go halves with you," until we're really talking that we really have the money. They're, they're hesitant to make that commitment.
So, my question is this. Before I can agree to, for taxpayers to put it in a bond, I need to know if our partner, and these are not proposed partners, these are people, these are agencies who may be funded by state or probably federal, like, like the, you know, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. I want to know how much skin they have in the game. And I don't want to say that disgracefully. I want to know how much are they going to add to Palm Beach County's, County's money and, and these projects before? And if we could have that information, for example, you said it probably will be that the Army Corps of Engineers will put some money in. But will they? How much? And how about the Lake Worth, you know, Lake Worth, what is it, the drainage system, the Water Management District? Or, I want to know how much they're going to contribute to helping Palm Beach County taxpayers in this, in this area. Because water, as you know very well, is something that transcends many, many different agencies. And I know that it has been very difficult to get money, or at least to get some assistance, from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers when it comes to Lake Okeechobee. So, if we could possibly have some input from staff as to what type of participation in numbers that these other partners are going to contribute to our taxpayers, you know, putting in money for these bonds at some point, maybe not today, but very, very soon.
So, what I can assure you is that our track record is that we have had very strong partnerships. To get that guarantee moving forward, I will say that this list of projects, we have more than $150 million of water projects that we could potentially do. It's much more than that. So, if you don't get into a relationship on the one project, you'll get it on another. There's going, we could always, we could always utilize the full 150 million, and if the board wanted to say, "We're not spending a dollar," that's not matched. We could probably, I think we could do that. We, we have a history of doing that in the, in all of our programs where we leverage our dollars. We've done that in the past, but like I said, at least a 50% matching funds. So, it's, like I said, it's very difficult to look at every program because they have their budgets, too. They have their, their budgets. They have to develop on an annual basis. And so, they can't guarantee, but they can say, "Well, budget for it if it gets approved," et cetera. But can we fully spend, we have more projects on this list than our, than our 150 million?
Mayor, I wonder if we could get information, because I know I worked on that Kalusahatchee and the, the mess in, in the lagoon, and we, we did not have very much participation from, from the federal government on that. And I wonder if we could at some point, before we vote on these issues, have a little more information about our partners and how much they're going to contribute before we can really say we want the taxpayers of this county.
Commissioner Sacks, I'm going to ask that we restrict our conversation at this point. Let Ms. Drum finish her presentation, and I think she's made the representation that we certainly could make a provision that no money would be expended out of this bond unless it was matched. So, I certainly think that we could address that issue on the front end, and even if we didn't have a specific list at this point. But Ms. Drum, why don't you finish up with your presentation?
Thank you, Ms. Drum. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so, Palmer Acquisition, the only reason that is orange is because it depends on willing sellers. We had $19 million in the bond, and we had $4 million of ARPA. So, you can see that we are working with PRIM currently to spend the ARPA dollars to look for willing sellers, and we have some very specific goals related to that. The West Palm Beach Canal spillway is fully dependent on working with the Water Management District on whether that is able to occur. Again, we had $10 million for the bond and $5 million for ARPA. Submerged lands acquisition, we have some high-risk areas within the county that we think are at risk for development of very important seagrass areas, and that was $7.5 million in the bond. And that was combined with the $4 million of ARPA, where we combined those two opportunities to try to explore willing sellers, both for submerged lands and for Palmer. The C-51 reservoir Phase II storage was $50 million on the original bond list, but we have successfully received 48 million from the state legislature for that project. Additionally, we've received another $65 million for the next phase of the C-51 reservoir. So, that is getting a lot of attention, getting a lot of money. That money will go through Palm Beach County to get that project. It's orange because we are, we are dependent on others to actually do the construction, and we are, have to do the contracting for that. Green Kay Wetlands, Phase II, is completely in our control. We have $10 million in the bond and $10 million in ARPA. Natural Area Connector Parcels, this was sort of a catch-all. Again, it's orange because of the willing seller element. We had $5 million for the bond, but we have combined this with that $4 million for general acquisition of environmentally sensitive lands and ARPA. Water storage in the L-8 basin, again, that's red because it depends on willing sellers potentially, the Water Management District, the Corps. This is, this could relate to the GL swap property, depending on where the board ends on that policy decision. So, a lot of complicating factors around this one. We had $40 million in the bond, and we have $8 million in ARPA. Septic-to-sewer conversions and stormwater quality improvements, those are orange only because it is, I think, a county responsibility. We are taking actions. We have taken a lot of actions since 2020 on both of these items, and so, we are moving ahead with assessments. It does depend on relationships with municipalities because that's where a lot of these issues lie. We were having discussions about economically disadvantaged communities and how, what criteria we could develop under the bond to ensure that we had equitable distribution or a level playing field for a lot of those communities. Both of these, you can see there was a $40 million combined in the bond, and we have a project, the septic system upgrade or conversion to centralized wastewater treatment for 11 million, of which $4.5 million is used for Palm Beach County parks projects that are on septic. We're trying to take care of our own backyard on that issue. And you'll see that we had stormwater improvements to just over 11 million in ARPA. So, where ARPA is concerned, we are taking action locally on both of these important issues. The C-51 boat lift had $5.5 million in the bond, and then we just received $250,000 of a specific appropriation in this legislative session for this project focused on the kayak launch portion of it, which is the less controversial piece of it. And that is out of our control. There's a lot of partners on that. We'd have to coordinate for the expenditures of those funds. And natural areas, public use facilities for our hungry land slough, completely in our control. We had that in 900,000 in the bond and $0 in ARPA. This next list of projects had, were not considered in the bond, but they were considered in ARPA. And so, you can see there's $500,000 for our Water Resources Infrastructure Capital Investment Plan, which is an essential step in us having a full understanding of what stormwater projects we need to do, as well as the Corbett Levy Phase II improvements, $2 million of ARPA funds. The Central Palm Beach County Historical Infrastructure Improvement Program through our engineers and in cooperation with the Village of Palm Springs, $3 million. A Backflow Preventer and Oil Grease Interceptor also through our engineering department, $300,000. And we had some contingency dollars, and that's the total of the ARPA dollars, 64 million. So, just to sum this up, the total estimated geo-bond list, again, caveated with those were old costs that I think have probably increased significantly, whereas about, about 216 million. If you back out the ARPA projects list of 64 million plus the appropriation of 48 million that was originally on that for the C-51 reservoir, you're left with about $104 million of projects that remain on the geo-bond list on the original list that were not covered by ARPA or specific appropriation. But I want to put a lot of caveats around this project list. Some of the projects on the list truly are estimates. Like I said, Mecca is a great example of how those costs are significantly higher than what we thought. And it also depends on what we can build on these sites, what the permits are, et cetera. We, my point is we need to remain flexible. We know that there are water resource needs in this region. We know that for long-term water security and clean water, we need to take some responsibility. The extent to which we want to do that, or how we want to do that, is up to the board. It's important to note that operations and maintenance on anything that we build related to these bond projects is not included, cannot be included in the bond expenditures. The board would have to budget in future budget years for any O&M, any operations and maintenance costs associated with a shallow reservoir, any kind of water features, any canals, any, any of it. A question remains for further direction from the staff or from the board is how projects will be prioritized and selected for funding, selected by the board? Is that going to come back to the board, project by project? Does the board want to create a stakeholder advisory group to oversee project selection and recommendations to the board? These are all things that we would need further direction if you do in fact decide to move forward. It's also important, can't caution enough, of the antecedent conditions that must be met to allow projects to move forward, things like agreements with landowners, permits, permissions to use land. Willing sellers, planning, design, and engineering are all factors when you're building these types of projects. You really do need to withhold your estimates until you really have that planning and engineer's estimate of what the actual cost will be. And the last item I wanted to highlight is how could the potential GL homes or ag reserve swap affect this list of projects? If you decide to do the swap or you decide not to do the swap, does that play any part in how you might look at this list differently, knowing that that parcel, that particular parcel of land, which Jeremy McBrien had previously highlighted as an important piece to the regional water discussion, how that might be considered or not? So, in the way of further direction, you know, the, does the, the conceptual approval of proposed project evaluation, what does that approach look like? What do you want us to do with additional public information, education, and outreach? What kind of outreach do you want us to do? And what, what is the timeline that you would like us to bring back further, further considerations? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drum. Commissioner McKinley?
Yeah, just a couple of questions, Deb. So, on these projects, what would call, call for significant partnerships with the district and with the Army Corps of Engineers? I mean, that could take years. We've seen how long it's taken to get some of those Army Corps projects done. One of my concerns is us doing their job for them. You know, one of the creative things about the C-51 is it was privately constructed, and then the state is using revenues to help pay back for some of that construction. When you look at things like the C-51 canal and some of those boat improvements, and more particularly in, in my district, and I got a lot of calls yesterday about fully funding the, the construction of the Corbett Levy. And I'm opposed to that. I wasn't opposed to making a small contribution towards it, but I am opposed to us taking control of a piece of state infrastructure. The state built half a levy. I mean, that's almost as brilliant as a congressional action to build a road to nowhere or a bridge to nowhere. They constructed half a levy. And we have been going back to the legislature for almost a decade, asking them to construct the other half of that levy so it actually can work properly. I don't want to put a project like that in this type of bond referendum and do the state's job for them. I, I mean, if, if, and I don't want to take on those operations and maintenance costs if we construct that levy. So, I might be a minority up here on the board in, in my feelings towards that. So, I'd have to ask if, if, for example, the Corbett Levy ended up... So I'd have to ask, if, for example, the Corbett Levy ended up in here for $10 million, which would cover the cost of the entire construction, would we be in charge of maintaining and operating that levy? Or would we just hand it over to the state and say, hey, we did your job for you, we paid for it, now you need to maintain it? How's that going to work?
So, that is reference to those antecedent conditions and the agreements that I talked about. So if we were to move forward on funding something, for example, the Corbett Levy, and we had a hard stop on any operations and maintenance, we would get into an agreement to do the work on the Corbett Levy. We would, you know, have an agreement with the Water Management District that would come to this board with very specific criteria that said all operations and maintenance from this point forward is the responsibility of XYZ. Same thing for a septic to sewer conversion. So if we were assisting a municipality, and we were funneling money through to do a septic to sewer conversion, we would need an agreement in place that made it very clear that it was the municipality's responsibility for ongoing operations and maintenance expenses related to that. Those kind of agreements are how we would have to separate ourselves out, and this is a good point, a good time to bring up. If we move forward on this, and I believe this is true for housing too, but I'll let them speak for themselves, it will take additional staff to manage these contracts, to get these agreements in place. It's going to take some legal support in order to make sure that the county's interests are protected.
And I'm a little less hesitant on the septic to sewer. I mean, that's a local-to-local partnership, and I see the benefits of that immediately. Is there an opportunity for us, if we were to do something like the Corbett Levy, to send the bill to the state? Hey, we fixed your infrastructure, now pay us back?
We could always send a bill. I don't know that they would pay it. But I think that the smart move would be to get into agreements in advance, so everybody has a common understanding. If this passed, and this was one of the projects that the board wanted to move ahead on as a priority, as an example, any project, that we meet with the entity that we would need to partner with, whether it's a city, town, municipality, a state government, or federal government, and say, this is what we're bringing to the table. These are, we need to get an agreement in place so we all understand our roles and responsibilities and what the limits are, and we either have a deal or we don't have a deal.
Okay, and here's the brilliance on the Corbett Levy. So, the Indian Trail Improvement District wanted to apply for a resiliency grant through the state of Florida to pay for that because it wasn't in the Water Management District's budget. The special districts are not eligible to apply for a resiliency grant, so they were asking the county to apply for it. So then the county would apply for a state grant at the request of a special district to fund a state project because the state agencies cannot apply for those grants. It's so backwards, and perhaps next legislative session, we can close some of those loopholes. But I am very, very hesitant on doing something like, you know, the Army Corps saying to us, we still want to do that MECA reservoir we proposed, but yeah, go ahead and put a bond out there and you pay for it. Unless they're going to give us that land and let us be in control of doing exactly what we want, I do not want to spend our local taxpayer dollars to do the job that another agency, another level of government, a federal level or a state level should be constructing.
I will acknowledge that some of these major projects on the list, most of the ones in red, those are very large regional water restoration projects that typically would have been done as part of the Comprehensive Everglades Restoration Plan. Many of them were components that were jettisoned for reasons that we still don't understand, and that we've made a big deal about that. But those are large regional restoration projects that traditionally would have been to bind the state and federal government. So it really is up to this board, the extent to which, how, the level at which you want to get involved in some of those types of projects versus stormwater or septic, as you've noted, are a little more local-to-local. There's all those different opportunities on this list, and it really is up to the board as to how you want to engage on a lot of those issues.
Right, and I don't mind making a contribution or providing some match dollars to be able to expedite that, much like Governor Scott did with the Herbert Hoover Dyke, and being able to put some state dollars, which nudged the federal government a little bit to finish that project sooner. I don't mind doing that. What I don't want us to do is completely in charge of the full financing of these water projects.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. Just following up on that, are we running the risk of taking the pressure off of our partners by stepping in with this newfound wealth and starting to pick up on some of these projects that we should have been able to see the feds and the state be there before we had to now put them on our list?
I don't think our partners would be, I mean, $150 million on these kinds of projects at this scale of what they're used to dealing with is not that much money, honestly. They can spend, $150 million could be half of one project for the level of complexity and the kind of projects that they're doing. I think they would be encouraged to see $150 million as a place where a local government could be much more of a player to help direct, partner, and guide some of those activities. So I don't think that they're super excited that we're going to do all of their work for them, but as Commissioner McKinley said, to nudge them in a direction, I think that it has the potential to do that.
What percentage of this do you think we would now be absorbing and embedding into our operational budget for the management and operation of these projects, should we be going forward with them?
It really depends on which projects you end up moving forward on, but you would have seen on the list, there were only three that were green that are solely in our responsibility. So one of them was the Lake Okeechobee restoration, so just let me highlight that one. To give you an example, we did look in 2020, when you asked us about operations and maintenance costs, because that was a discussion. We estimate that this annually is about a $50,000 to $100,000 annual expense to maintain that project once constructed. It's to complete islands in the Pahokee area in Lake Okeechobee that will address water quality improvement and habitat improvement. That gives you an example on that. For Palmer acquisition, if we were to complete all of our acquisition in Palmer and get all of those things done, I've come to you in the past about our deficiencies, and you guys have met and supported our staff on our natural areas fund and what we need to manage the funds, it would be an additional $360,000 a year to manage those properties that we would get full acquisition of, just to give you ballpark numbers, to give you an idea. Some of those bigger projects, if we're building a shallow reservoir on MECA, that's going to be significantly more. But one of the things that we had noted on that was that the county will utilize the dollars to restore the property with the understanding that the district will assume long-term operations and maintenance activities on the property. So again, for us to even go to a project or go to a partner with money, the understanding in the agreement would have to be legally represented that operations and maintenance was outside of the responsibility of the county. I would not recommend that we assume operations and responsibility, operations and maintenance responsibility for those types of projects. We don't have control, we don't have the staff, we don't have the capability, we don't have the budget.
Okay, and again, I think it's important to point out then that this is not the total cost of these projects, that they're going to have a long tail on them with the operational and maintenance costs that are going to be borne by our taxpayers going forward. Vice Mayor Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I want to just go back and circle back to where we are today with some of the ARPA funding. So we took $11 million towards the MECA project. Where are we at with South Florida Water Management District? That's, I mean, to me, that's a reasonable amount of money to bring to the project. Have they indicated any kind of willingness, support?
Yes, I was, you know, Jeremy was having a lot of those discussions, and I was included in some of them. We have in the budget for ARPA, the Lox River wetland attenuation feature of 8 million. That's not necessarily MECA, it could be anywhere in the L-8 basin that we look at opportunities to store water, much-needed water for the Loxahatchee River, and for, you know, addressing local flooding issues, et cetera. The Water Management District has been, I think, very supportive in a lot of their discussions, but as Jeremy has represented, you know, there are features that are already in an adopted plan that the federal government has approved through their federal-state partnership, where MECA is slated to be a deep reservoir, and our county has said that we are not interested in that feature. And so, they really put it on us to say, if you were going to take the storage on MECA and make it something less than, how are you going to make up for that storage somewhere else? And if the county has a solution that they could bring to the table to bring storage in another area in that basin that would help keep the project whole in terms of the benefits, then we can have that conversation. They've invited, I think, they've invited us to come out to visit MECA, to get with them, to get a better perspective on the project that they have completed. I think they are open to conversations. They, during the bond discussion previously, I believe Drew Bartlet came to one of our meetings, spoke on the bond. They're kind of waiting to see what we're going to do with the bond, what we're going to do with the GL swap, kind of what's happening.
But I guess I'm maybe getting a little, if what we're saying is, we need to bring money to the table in order to have a discussion, we brought money to the table, and it doesn't sound like there's an agreement.
The ARPA dollars of 8 million, I will have to circle back with Jeremy and find out where he left any of those discussions, because ARPA is a relatively new development.
Okay, let's talk about Palmer lands. Have we acquired any lands yet? Do we have any willing sellers?
Yes.
And how much is it per acre?
We have not done the appraisals yet. We are working with PREM. PREM is standing up a program to utilize the ARPA dollars. SMA and her team have been doing an outstanding job, and they are contracting out for some of those negotiation, the negotiation work, similar to what we've done with the $150 million in bonds that we had in the past. So we're in the process of doing that, but I don't have an appraised value per acre yet.
Is it going to utilize the entire $4 million?
But I guess it depends on how many acres, you know, we can get. We're focused on 39 parcels east of the Lemongroves property that would consolidate a large county ownership where we could actually go in and manage the property. We're optimistic about that, about the ARPA expenditure there.
I mean, I'm just, I'm looking at, you know, we put $63 million of ARPA plus money towards the seawall as well, and I'm just, I guess I'm wanting to understand, okay, we've now done the 63, where are we at on spending that money? And, you know, because now we want to talk about spending more taxpayer dollars.
I did not come prepared today to give you an ARPA update on every bit of the 64 million. I can speak for the 11 million for the South Lake Worth inlet seawall. I mean, we are working through all of the engineering and design and permitting for that, and we are moving ahead very quickly.
Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you. Ms. Drum, you are very, very comprehensive, very knowledgeable in this area, and a good advocate. I think what is difficult for us in this discussion today, maybe not difficult, but a little disconcerting, is that many of us have worked with these partners. I've worked with many of them in the legislature, and I know Mr. Von Lahren is here today to talk to us about the budget. Water has always been a big issue in Tallahassee, and they usually fund water projects throughout the state. Army Corps of Engineers is something completely different, as you know, because they're the feds, and sometimes they're not that interested in working with us as much as the state is. So I just would like to know, at some point in our discussion, maybe not today, what type of participation are we getting from these other agencies? Not just the feds, not just the state. And I know the budget is not in yet, and he may veto some of these issues on water projects, but it appears to me, from what I'm reading, that we have some pretty good, well-funded water projects throughout the state, many of which is going to be here in this area. So, it is important for us to know, as county commissioners, what input are we getting from our partners, federal and state, and what input are we going to get from the South Florida Water Management District? What input are we going to get from the Lake Worth Drainage District to help us with these, before we vote on these projects? Certainly before we vote on whether or not we should have the bond. One particular and specific issue I'll leave with you is the issue of the Loxahatchee National Wildlife Refuge, which is in my district, and which will be affected by development around it. It is one of the issues that you note in your proposal, but it is nationally funded, and I do want to make sure it's protected, and you do too, because you put it in as one of the areas that we should look at regarding development right up to that wildlife refuge. So I think we just have some unanswered questions, and I'm sure we can go through them, especially, Mr. Von Lahren is with us today. He knows that many of the funding for water projects will be in the budget. Most of them are not grants, they're budgeted allocations for water throughout the state, and I think at that point, we can take a more reasonable look at how much we will contribute as a county, and then how much we will be responsible for maintenance and operations. Thank you so much, Ms. Drum. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. Commissioner Marino.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, I think before I could vote on anything like this, I need to know what all the operations and maintenance would be, what the additional staff cost would be for this, because if we're going to go out and tell everybody it's only $6 a year, that's really not the whole picture, and I don't think that's fair to our taxpayers. But I just wanted, and the dollar amount we're coming up with right now, the balance of $104 million is based on 2020 values, not on 2022 values. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, just your comparison on MECA, which was...
15 to now 40 or 50.
15, 2020 versus 40 to 50 million today. These are astounding changes. And when we talk about the bond, the $150 million bond referendum that we spent $100 million buying land in the ag reserve, for round figures, I'll say we purchased roughly 2,500 acres in the ag reserve. Is that correct?
22.
Plus or minus, okay. $100 million, so that works out to about $40,000 an acre in dollars from the year 2000, right? So, roughly, I mean, okay. So, we have an opportunity to do a swap of land and get 1,600 acres for free, and if you do the $2,000 values for land at that point in time, that's the equivalent of $64 million in land that the county can get for free, correct? Did I do my math right? 1,600 acres times $40,000 an acre is $64 million.
Sounds about right, yes.
Okay, so we can get that for free, and we wouldn't have to put it in a bond. And that would go towards the, where you have here, water storage in the L-8 basin, that would be another option to relieving the demand on MECA. That would improve the water flow to grassy waters, a whole lot of water storage, and this would be a, this would not just be a Palm Beach County improvement, this would be a regional improvement.
Obviously, a lot of issues around that decision, but that would, if the board decides to do that, then that would make it an option.
It would be something we wouldn't have to fund, something that our taxpayers wouldn't have to fund. Okay, so, has the Office of Resilience given their input on this project list yet? And I know that we have them doing a resiliency action plan, so do we have any results of that, or any tie-ins that we can bring to the table to help us here?
To your first question, yes. Megan's office was involved greatly developing the ARPA list that came through, and that was, their imprint was on that, very much so. As it pertains to the vulnerability analysis, that's a product of the grant we received from Department of Environmental Protection, just got that signed off and completed, and we're beginning work on hiring a consultant and beginning those efforts.
Okay, and do we know if any of those efforts are on this list?
So, we coordinated with the Office of Resilience on a list of capital projects or capital needs that they have. They're just not ready, they're doing their assessments now, and they're not ready to weigh in at this point in time on what their capital project needs might be. For instance, do you have a stretch of road? needs might be. For instance, do you have a stretch of road that always floods during sunny days? Do you need to raise said road? That assessment has not been done yet, but we are continually having those discussions. They're just not ready yet, and where they are with their project planning, to be recommending capital investments at this time.
Okay, I have more questions, but I will ask later.
Thank you, Commissioner Marino. All right. I'm hearing resistance at this point to giving staff a direction to go forward with this bond, and so I'm hearing at least two right now who are resistant, and I think we need to have some discussion among ourselves just to see what our temperature is on this. I know Commissioner Bernard and Commissioner Kerner really haven't spoken on this yet, and I personally don't see how we can make a timeline for the primary. I think we have too many open questions right now. I would certainly like to hear from our residents if the commissioners are not ready to offer their own input at this point. Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor, and as the commissioner that brought this to the Board of County Commissioners for consideration, I think it's safe to say that I am in support of, of this item and in support of hearing from the public on it.
Very good. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I do support this item, and we'd love to hear from the, the public.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. Commissioner Sacks, we'll hear from you briefly so we can go on to our public comment.
Ditto, same thing. Let me, let me make it in better words. I support, I support this proposal, and I look forward to hearing from the, from the residents, and I think that's a very good suggestion. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, then let's start. Now, we have a lot of comment cards for 4A, and as you know, 4A is two items. It's water and it's housing. So Commissioner Kerner is going to call your name. If you would prefer not to speak on this particular item, just say no, or no thank you, and we will move on. So Commissioner Kerner, would you do the honors?
Very good. Thank you, Mayor, and we're, we're going to be asking you to utilize both microphones, and so I'll direct a speaker to each microphone so that we can proceed through this as efficiently as possible. The first speaker will be Robert Robbins to the microphone to your left, and then Timothy Daughtry to the microphone on your right, and then Chip Block, Vice Mayor.
And again, these are just comments on the water, and if you wanted to defer because you've already made your presentation, that's fine, so we can take another name.
Very good. So we'll have Mr. Daughtry and Vice Mayor Block.
Very good. You are recognized for three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, commissioners. I'm a resident of Lake Clark Shores, which is in Commissioner Kerner's district, and we are in the process of undertaking a septic-to-sewer conversion, and that conversion affects 702 houses. It's expected cost in the neighborhood of $15 million, and we will be presented with individual bills of $21,300 per house just to deliver sewers to our curb. There are additional costs that are on top of that. I support the water bond for some ability for us to recover some of these costs, because for my personal house, I have already run the numbers many, many, many times, and the individual cost at my house is going to run me between $30,000 and $50,000. And it's going to amount to somewhere between $250,000 and $325,000 a year for the rest of my life. So I support any monies we could receive from the county commission through this bond issue to help us with this project. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Kerner would like to address you.
Thank you, Mr. Daughtry, for your comments here today. And in designing the basic structure and concept of this bond proposal, one of the most important parts to me was being proactive as a county, trying to get septic-to-sewer, because every day for generations, we've had pollutants and nutrients draining into our waterways. Tell us just very briefly about the status of the, of Lake Clark and, and any involvement the state government has had in declaring it a polluted waterway.
Okay, so the lake has been determined an impaired waterway, which means we are under order to come up with some sort of solution to improve the quality of the water in our lake. I am a big supporter of sewers, but the dollars that we're being asked to spend on an individual basis make it very difficult for our community. Also, I think as part of this, we need to look at it as a regional solution, because we are part of a chain of lakes, and Lake Clark Shores is one of the last waterways before the spillway that goes out to the intercoastal. And I also believe that there's a lot of pollutants added to that lake from runoff, which I think both the county and our locality should be addressing. And we should be doing studies on what the actual pollutants in these lake and waterway systems are, okay? My septic system is a good bit away from any canal or tributary to the lake. I'm a landlocked property, but the pollutants in the lake are very high and have been very high for a very, very, very long time. And like I said, the Department of Environmental Protection has determined it an impaired waterway, which means we will have to do something to correct the water quality in our lake. Additionally, a lot of these pollutants are not pollutants that come from our neighborhood. We're talking about 702 houses here, okay? A lot of these pollutants come from outside of our area. I've been involved in water cleanups on our lake, in the amount of product that we find in and around our lake every time we do the lake cleanup. It's, it's clear that a lot of the pollutants and a lot of particulate matter comes from outside of our lake system. So we're looking for help. That's what we're looking for, help from the federal government, the state government, the county, and, and of course, our locality. And I think it's a regional solution. It needs all regional part, all people involved in the process and all contributing to improving the quality of our waterways. It's not just the county. It's not just Lake Clark Shores. It's not just me. It's not just the state. It's not the feds. All of us must play a part, and all of us need participating in coming up with the dollars it takes to improve our waterways.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
All right, following Vice Mayor Block, we will have Jeff Coons to the microphone, microphone on the right, and then Patrice Schroeder, Schrodu, lives at 1701 North Flagler.
Vice Mayor, you are recognized, and thank you for coming.
Thank you. It's an honor to speak before Jeff Coons. I promise I'll be shorter than he will. I'm here as Vice Mayor of Jupiter and Lake Colony, Vice President of Sustainable Palm Beach County, and Chairman of Your Principal Advisory Board on Water, the County Water Resources Task Force. And by the way, we have a meeting on Thursday, and I hope you'll join Commissioners Weiss and McKinley in coming to our meeting. We're having a presentation by Jen Reynolds of the district, formerly of the Army Corps, who might be able to address some of these questions. Since Richard Radcliffe is here, I will mention that I am Florida League of Cities delegate to the Water Resources Task Force. In 2019, the task force recommended this bond to the county commission. I have no reason to believe there's any change in sentiment from that period. I believe that water and weather are the two reasons why most of us are here. There's not a lot, last time I checked, that the Board of County Commissioners and the voters of Palm Beach County can do about the weather, but water is another story in terms of our quality of life. I have tremendous confidence in Deb Drum and the entire ERM staff, and one of the things that they have done, along with the governor's appointment of a very good board at the Water District, is to improve relations tremendously with both the Water District and the Army Corps of Engineers. I am very confident the historic 50/50 and sometimes better leverage that we have in using our money to get investors, mainly the district, the environmental protection from the state, and the Army Corps of Engineers to further invest in Palm Beach County. I would also point out that a lot of these water projects that Commissioner Sacks talked about that are approved in Tallahassee are not localized. We need to take our own destiny in our own hands. We have a problem. We have remedial problems. We need solutions to those problems, along the problem of the septic systems at Lake Clark Shores and other hotspots that have a direct impact on the Lake Worth Lagoon. This water bond will help with that. We have problems with water supply, and the LA Basin project and potentially Mecca will help solve those, along with helping to restore the minimal daily flows to the Loxahatchee River. In the future, we expect more population growth. We need water to be able to supply potable water to our people. We need water, clean water for recreation. That's why we're here. We need water for storage. We need, we need storage for water. And the last thing I'll say is, let the voters decide. I understand the concerns about our spending money, the voters agreeing to spend the money, the partnerships with the feds and the state. I'm very confident that we can leverage this money. In business, if you go out to raise $100 million and you contribute $10 million at the beginning, it's a lot easier to raise the other $90 million. And the last thing I'll say is, let the voters decide.
Thank you for your remarks. Commissioner, always good to see you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner, just one moment. After Commissioner Coons, we have Patrice, and then Jennifer Sellers. And by the way, if you have a card submitted and it doesn't indicate whether it's on the housing or the water, we will recall these cards for the next workshop as well. So Patrice, Jennifer Sellers, Reverend Gerald Kinzer, please start to move forward.
Yes, my name is Jeff Coons. I was a county commissioner. I chaired two county water, regional water systems, one in the early 90s, and we started the Water Committee. And I've been working on water for 33 years, showed up as a West Palm Beach City Commissioner, got to build the ECR plant, got to do NPDS, served in the county commission to do well field ordinance, so I've been working on water forever. Water knows no political boundary. It flows all over the place, and we're in a crisis with water. That list probably needs to be updated because of what happened in the last two years. West Palm Beach tried to get the district to turn on, allow them to run their wellfields. It did not. Algae came in in lakes like that. It was mismanagement by the district. We need our own dollars to be able to determine our own destiny, and this water is on a regional basis. Our friends at the Everglades Foundation say send the water south. That doesn't necessarily mean the water's going to go to Loxahatchee, which flows into the Lake Worth Drainage District, which flows in to keep...